Good evening, everyone. We're here for a council workshop tonight on August 28, 2017. I've been, so I'll call the meeting to order. I've been asked by representatives of the Harvest Festival, they didn't realize that tonight was a workshop night, and would like to make a brief public comment concerning the upcoming Harvest Festival.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Again, thank you. I know it's unprecedented to allow us the time this evening, but what we have for you tonight is our poster, and it's coming up. Yes, we've got some cookies and stuff for you as well. This year it's fantasy fairy tales and folklore, and we hit the ground running early this year, and we have 12 bands for our grand parade. We've got multiple floats, so we're very excited for that. That's Saturday, the 9th. We also have new this year, along with our movie in the park, we've got a little mini kitty drive-in. And Office Max donated 30 boxes. Those boxes have been transformed into little cars, so the kids that come early get to get little cars for their mini drive-in for the family movie in the park Saturday night. We also have arts and crafts this year, but 16 events over the three days, and I wanted to put a special thank you not only to Lori Gillis and the city staff and Mark Devon, and thank you all as well for your support of the Harvest Festival. We are super excited. Biggest thing this year, carnival came back, and it's absolutely 100% due to Harkins Theater. So wonderful community partnership there, and again, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. 92nd year. Congratulations.
Good night.
Okay, we have four workshop items tonight. First one, Mr. Devon, you want to lead us off?
Yes. I was asked by the Arvada Center staff, Arts and Humanities, for a lot, a little time for a quick announcement about the Arts and Ales event. There was a little information in your packet about that. Philip Snead will make that presentation.
Very good. Evening, Philip.
Thank you very much. We just heard about the 92nd, is it, Harvest Festival? This is the first annual Arts and Ales event, and it's, we hope to be around for 92 years. It's an attempt, one of several things we've been doing to activate the sculpture field and to have more activity along Wadsworth, both for the activity itself and to draw people, to make people aware that there's something exciting happening on the site and to lure people into the building as well. So we have a gift for the seven of you and for the three city managers, an Arts and Ales tee-shirt. And why it's important that you take that tee-shirt is because with that tee-shirt you can get admission to the festival for only $5, as well as a free souvenir tasting glass. So we're going to have a couple dozen different breweries there. We're going to have artist booths and food trucks and other kinds of vendors and activities for children. And this is, of course, a fundraiser for the art center. We're working with event planner Dana Kane. And we expect several thousand people in each of the two days, Saturday and Sunday, September 16th and 17th. And first of its kind, so I hope you'll all come out and enjoy it. As I say, we have tee-shirts tonight. The glasses aren't available, and we're going to have them available for you at the entrance gates. So just identify yourself as a city council member, and you can go and taste beer in moderation, of course, and enjoy the art. There are many beer festivals around the state, but we believe this is the only one that celebrates the arts as well as beer. So thank you for the time, and the City of Arvada is listed on the tee-shirt and elsewhere as a sponsor of the event because of all the things that the city does for the Arvada Center. So thank you for the time. I'm happy to take any questions, but mostly I just hope to see you out there at Arts and Ales. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that was a quick workshop.
No, there's a few more things tonight.
Okay.
We wanted to provide city council with an update on the Safe and Accessible Arvada program, and our Arvada Housing Authority staff will make that presentation. I believe Ed Talbot will be leading off.
Ed, I don't expect your workshop to be quite as quick as Philip's, but he does set a good example.
I figure you'd give me extra time because he was so short?
No.
Darn. All right. Okay, I'll take that to heart, maybe. Okay. We'd like to take a few minutes, as Mark mentioned, to, since we're a bit at a milestone with the Safe and Accessible Arvada program, and to basically give you a brief report on the status of that, and hopefully maybe lead after we give you some information if there's any questions or feedback you might like to provide on that, given where we're at. And I would like to make an introduction. We're going to do a tag team on this. This gentleman here is Mr. Jason McCullough. He's with Brothers Redevelopment. He's the manager for home modification for Brothers, so he's basically the lead for the team in this partnership that works on this particular program for us. So between Jason and myself, we figured we will try to walk you through the program and hopefully just a brief report to you on this. So project background. Now, the program, this was actually created to address residential accessibility needs, and we've seen that obviously with the aging of the population and just in general, there are folks that are challenged in our community relative to accessibility in their dwellings, right? So this program uses funds that were collected under the former city visitability ordinance. As you may remember, without going through a lot of past history, that program was repealed. But two main things on that program, a developer under the conditions of the program could either provide certain improvements, I shouldn't say improvements, or certain elements when they were built, would build a home that would basically improve its visitability, call it accessibility. If they didn't go through and actually provide that, they paid funds, or they paid an amount to the city that was put aside in place of actually getting that work done. So this became, basically with the repeal of that ordinance, this became the monetary source for this, for this new program, Safe and Accessible. Rather than do this in-house, the decision was made to let's partner up with someone who really does this work, who does it well, has experience doing that, so that they can provide this sort of service for us in the community. Keep down-staffing, obviously, let's do it on a collaborative basis with a partner out there. So again, Brothers Redevelopment's a nonprofit organization. It was a request for proposals process to administer the program, and Brothers was selected to do that, and that contract I think was signed back in September, if I recall correctly. They've had extensive experience doing similar programs across the six-county area, and they've been in business for a while. And they're dedicated to providing affordable and accessible housing and housing assistance. Again, that is why we would choose them as a good partner for this. Now, the contract that was signed is for 75 grand a year to try to basically get the work that can be done within that amount. And the current agreement that we have will run through December 31st of 2017, so another reason to come with to you with a report, because obviously this contract will, does end, or agreement does end, in December of this year.
Mr. Marriott, I've got a question.
Can I ask you just a quick question, Mr. Talbot?
You bet.
While you're here, if you want to go back one screen, the contract is $75,000 for this year. That includes both administration of the program as well as the improvements, the actual work that gets done?
That's correct.
Can you break those, either by percentage or by number, just roughly, don't have to be exact, but is it $5,000 worth of administration and $70,000 worth of improvements, or is it 50/50?
I think I'll have Jason help me on that one.
Yeah, sure. I'll jump on that. Hi, thanks for having me. So with the, with the way we run this program, similar to most of our other programs, administration is per project, and it's usually around 5%, 5 to 7 on average percent of the project total. It's just the assessment phase, the recording, and then the billing process, that's the only administration that takes place. So it's very, very small when compared to, you know, the actual cost of the project.
So just in rough numbers, somewhere around 5,000 of the 75,000 is the administrative cost of the program?
I'd say probably it'll be around there, yeah.
70,000 is the actual work being done.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need. Thanks.
So actually, this is a good point, where I'm actually going to do a tag team, and back to Jason, where he's going to take a look at the client eligibility qualifications for the program and then give you a picture of who those clients are, kind of where they're located, so you get a sense of the feel, who's benefiting and being served to this particular program.
Okay, so thus far, we've completed seven projects. Let me back up. So the eligibility qualifications, client must rent or own or rent. This is one of the only programs we run that we do allow renters because it is specifically accessibility. And if, we've had one project that was a rental situation, we also make sure that the owner of the property can show a significant hardship to provide these, these upgrades and modifications, and then partner with them to provide those. Basically, the reasoning is we're creating accessible housing in Arvada that's permanently accessible, so even after the tenant leaves, this home is outfitted for a disabled or for a resident that would require that, which is there's a drought of that in the area. Secondly, the income level is 80% or lower of AMI, and then there is an assessment item in which we go through and assess for only accessibility items. Anything home rehab is sent back to the city for the home rehab, the essential repairs program. Types of projects we've done, as I said, now I'll catch up, but we've done seven projects thus far. Got one in process right now in the assessment phase. They've all been fairly similar. They've all, all but one have been in senior households. They've mostly been owned for several decades. A couple of them have been owned since the home was built, and they've all been just basically, let's call it a life moment, where someone's going from a walker to a wheelchair or is having difficulty accessing any part of their house or specific areas of the house that are needed to access to stay in the home, specifically bathrooms and the front entrance to the home. So we've done some ramping, we've done some bathroom modifications, removal of tubs, insulation of roll interstep and showers. We've also done one stair lift, and we've done a lot of safety railing. We do custom safety railing on homes without, if you have a front porch and you still have an ambulation level to where you want to use the stairs, but you don't have a rail that's a significant fall risk. So that's the majority of the work we've done so far. The location of the projects are fairly well spread out. I've got the slide here. It's West 67th Place. I won't go through the specifics of each thing, you can read through there, but they're pretty much central. It's definitely, we call this aging home, so it's parts of Arvada where the homes were built, 1950s to probably the 19, late 1960s. Homeowners have usually been there, on average, I'd say for 30 years, if not longer, and they are, as I said, mostly senior. I'll turn it back over for the product integration.
So one thing we wanted to know is basically, how does this program meld with some of the other services we provide in the community? And so we picked three that I think are central to this. First one, probably almost sort of obvious, the essential home repairs program. This basically allows us to extend the amount of assistance that might be necessary in a home, two separate programs, but one doesn't foreclose the other in terms of bad term, foreclose. Never mind that term. One doesn't prevent the other from being utilized for the program, so they can kind of double up depending on what's needed, because we can do accessibility improvements with essential home repairs. We have done this, but this extends our capacity with a proven performer on this to get that work done. And again, they both serve as a conduit for referrals. Someone who's basically doing the other may learn about essential repairs and vice versa. The neighborhood rehab program, think of the Be a Tool program, same thing. We both still have that conduit for referrals back and forth, okay? And the jobs can be assisted, again, with both of these, and I think there's two that are on the list for the day of service that basically, they'll have work that may be addressed at the day of service that we're interested or participating in the Safe and Accessible. So again, we have that kind of flow back and forth between the programs. One that maybe not quite is known would be the CHAC, the Down Payment Assistance Program. We've been doing this for a period of time with the Kara Housing Assistance Corporation. This wouldn't be obviously in tandem, these got to be sequential. But if someone were to get into a home through the program and it did need that accessibility type of work, then we could refer that over to Brothers Redevelopment for Safe and Accessible. They would have one foot to follow the other, obviously. But again, we do have that potential on all three of these programs for that melding in terms of the effort might be necessary to help the households that are involved. So expenditures since the original contract, this is a little bit dated, but we've been billed through the program for about $39,000 as of the end of June. At this, at that time, there was an additional $8,000 or so underway, and in talking to Jason, I think we're closer to expenditures around $58,000?
Yeah, 58, and we'll be probably in the mid-60s here in the next few weeks.
So next, a few weeks, maybe into the mid-60s. So we're definitely making good progress relative to getting these funds expended to do the work that's anticipated with this program. And then you can see some of the expenditures, gets back to Councilman Marriott's question as well, that we're looking at the actual assessment, labor and materials, any of the specialized subcontractors, depending on the work that's necessary, and of course, compliance and oversight. So project funding, that gets back to that visitability balance at the end of the, when the ordinance was repealed, how much was there? We started around close to $600,000, which is a substantial amount of funds. The contract, again, is for 75 grand for the 2017 contract amount. As you can see, we may be bumping up against that $75,000 limit, but in talking to Jason if there's a question, we may have for this year, through Brothers Redevelopment and their kind participation, may be able to extend with some of their own resources to actually extend us a little bit on that. And the program, if you just looked at that 75 grand a year, if indeed that's the way it worked out, it probably would exhaust the funding if we continued this contract with Brothers for this in about, give or take, seven years. And if increase, if awareness does increase, one of the questions might be, do we want to consider providing more funds for this program, given the fact that expenditures are going, and there is good participation in this? And then, we'd like to open it up to any questions you might have.
Mr. Marriott?
Just one quick one. Your last slide brought up the, the existing funds may be exhausted in about seven years. Are there any possibilities for outside sources of funding through any of the foundations? You know, I remember the, the, oh, gosh, can't think of it now, but any, any of the big foundations that, that do this type of, of kind of work, have we done any looking around about what things might be available to kind of extend that funding?
To my knowledge, and I could be wrong on this very honestly, I do not believe there's been an extensive effort to try to see if there might be another source of funds. On the federal level, one thing about this is that we're utilizing funds here that are not tied to federal requirements. One of the things that really help us with this program, not to say that federal regulations may not be necessary, but they indeed can create some delays and barriers. So one thing is to, that's a value with this funding, obviously, using the, this particular fund, it does keep us away from the federal regs, because we're not dealing with federal regs for this.
Well, and not only that, it avoids things like Davis Bacon and all kinds of other strings attached deals.
Correct.
The, the thing, I guess I would encourage us all to do over the next seven years would be to, to look at outside funding where it might be appropriate. Doesn't mean, you know, we, we might not want to take outside funding if it contains so many strings that it makes the program unworkable, but if, if none of that comes to fruition, this might ought to be as part of our, oh, part of the annual funding we do of our, of our own kind of nonprofits, that this, maybe this falls into the areas as useful. To me, this seems like pretty low individual expenditures to have pretty big impacts on somebody's life.
Correct.
If their mobility situation changes, but yet they can stay in their house. That seems to be, you know, boy, as good of a, good of a housing situation as you can make. So I would encourage us to kind of keep, keep this near the top if in seven years the funds are, are exhausted, that we try to keep it going.
Right. And one consideration is that we, I think the intent here, I don't think it was, is the intent of the city is to take a look at that balance of funds that came out of visitability, and is to stay true to why those developers and such paid into that. They were paying in for a particular purpose. That was the original ten, the program, accessibility, pardon me, accessibility or visitability. So this is really in keeping, this sort of, you know, as to what that intent was when those folks paid that money into this fund originally.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I guess one other comment I would make too, and that's, you know, at the start of the program, it looks like we're going to use $75,000 this year. To me, it's probably better for us to expend that fund balance over seven years rather than double it up next year and double it the year after that and be out of, out of funds in three years, that, that I would encourage us to take a, a long-term deliberate approach to this so that this program's around for a really long time, given, you know, obviously, $600,000 has $600,000 worth of effect, but the $600,000 over a longer period of time probably gives more people equitable access to the funds rather than just the very early adopters. So again, just, just my two cents.
Right. And one consideration, just remember, this is not a loan program, so there's not revenue coming back from repayments.
Right.
So when the money's out the door, it's done, okay? Unless obviously it's supplemented from another source. So, but actually, that is just one of the types of input we were hoping to get back from the council, is that thought about, should we basically spend more money if you were years, or try to extend it?
Okay. Mr. McGough?
Yes, I'm just wondering if I, if this is the right calculation, about $75,000 during the year. You described eight projects. Is that from the 75, so that there, an average cost might be that $9,000 or so on a project?
I'm going to ask Jason to help me on that.
I was just wondering what the value of those is.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So we set up originally a soft cap of $5,000 per household to kind of just see what the need was and what kind of response we would receive out there. It was a little bit higher. Our average is around $7,000 to $8,000. We've capped it since, decided in partnership to cap it at $10,000. If we do have costs go over that, what Brothers Redevelopment will do, which we do with all our partnerships, is we'll use our foundational support to take care of that overage to make sure there's a successful outcome for the project. So that's, that's kind of where there's some give and take, but the average estimated project has been probably around $8,000, I'd say. Yeah, thus far, just because of the scope of the project's cost to subcontractors, which we do pass through, and we don't charge an additional overage for, for any subcontractor involvement, it's just, just the subcontractor cost. And if I could mention one other item, should this go the full seven years, you will, in effect, have a, a study on aging in Arvada, because we, we track every single thing we do, we track how long it takes to do it, we track who we did it for, what their situation was, where they're located. So you'll have a lot of information on mobility issues, aging issues, aging home issues in Arvada specifically when we're done with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Pfeifer?
Yeah, so I would look at it a little bit differently, that if, if there's a need and we need the funds now, I'd rather address it now where costs are lower than they will be in seven to 10 years. And then also, there's a need, that silver tsunami is happening, and I think it's going to explode a little bit faster than pushing it out further. So I, my view would be a little bit different, again, balanced by need. I wouldn't just say, let's put 150,000 out there and then go hunt for it, but if the need shows up, we should be very open to that.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I'm torn on this subject as well. We don't, I tell people, I don't, I kind of wait for the rain to fall. I don't, we don't go out and market.
Right.
The city does a lot of that, just to get the word outreach and messaging, and what, what comes, comes. This has been a very aggressively successful program. Compared to other programs we've started in other areas, this has been a, it's been a very upward launch. So I'd say you're probably going to have an uptick in need, to which I would say, potentially spend more if needed. We can do extensions, you know, on a case-by-case or a yearly basis, or work something out with, with your department on that. We can also throw in some more skin in the game, if you will, to make sure it lasts as long as we possibly can if the need is there. And then also, I'd say, just see what the trends show and see where it's happening. It might take, we might need to hone the parameters of accessibility services as well to conserve and make sure we're, we're affecting the most dire needs for the population.
I think this is one of the topics we just need to review every year and see where we are.
Yeah, that's my world. That's all I do.
And the last thing is the data you're getting around aging, I'd, I wonder how interesting this data would be for the area on aging at Dr. Cog with Jayla Sanchez, to see if, if this information can help with some of the other programs they're trying to do there around mobility and seniors. And it's, it's a bigger issue, not just getting out of your house, but then how do you get to the doctor?
Right, yeah. And we can place that in tandem with, with, we have a call center as well that covers this, the six-county area, so we can pull out numbers of who's calling for, for housing questions, whether it be renters or homeowners or seniors, and kind of have that compared to what this program's doing and what other programs with the city are doing as well.
Okay, thanks.
Nancy Ford?
So this program was before I was on council. I wanted to find out, how, how long was it that we were charging these fees to the developers?
Too long.
15 years.
I'm going to need a little help on that.
My best recollection, Councilmember Ford, is about eight years.
Okay, so eight.
Seven or eight years, somewhere in that order.
In eight years, we collected almost 600,000 then?
Yeah, whatever the number was, yes.
And what we found, and I think one reason, and the council wanted to address this, is we weren't finding builders putting those elements in the units. They would essentially choose to pay the money so they didn't have to do that.
Right.
Well, and the market wasn't asking, their customers weren't asking for those features in the new houses that were being built. That's what we discovered. David Jones?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you both. This is a great update. My hope is that in January, or sometime near there, we'll get an update on the successes of the projects this year. And to Bob's point on the data, I think that data will be key as we continue to look forward in the silver tsunami and just every data point that we can get as it relates to allowing someone to age in place and/or make better accessibility is critical to the residents of Arvada. So I just, but I wanted to thank you, and I appreciate your comment about Brothers Redevelopment being willing to, to go out to your foundation, if needed, for additional money. I appreciate that very much.
I think that's a good comment, because obviously you're getting some good data right here as to what the status is now, because obviously we'll have to be taking a look at an extension or something of the agreement as it terminates, assuming we want to keep it going, but maybe to take a look at those numbers as close as we can to the end of the year, but we need to have you take a look at that agreement if we're going to go again.
Yeah, my sense is obvious. I think it's a program that ought to continue. I, I don't want us to just spend out 75,000 a year without efforts to find other partners and funding sources, and then at the end of the seven years, run out of the money. You know, so let's, let's not wait until we're out of money to start finding other partners to get engaged in this or other potential funding sources, so.
And I think one thing you develop, and you guys know how this works, is that when you show success.
Exactly.
And you help people, the rest of it, and you can demonstrate that out there with a track record, it gives you a little bit more, what's that called, dread, greed? In terms of when you're trying to get out and basically maybe try to leverage other resources.
Right.
And say, this is working, and it's helping people that need to get the help.
Yep. Good. Okay. Mr. Devon, anything else you need from us at this point on this issue?
No, thank you. Just a little feedback.
Good. Thank you all. Okay, next we're going to have a discussion, a discussion about Arvada hospitality and the Arvada Events Master Plan, Part Two.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'll have Gordon Rusa can introduce this item.
Mayor, members of city council, on July 24th of this year, you had the first of two presentations on the Arvada Events Master Plan, and at that meeting, if you recall, we spent time talking about the history of Arvada events, the ideas that generated its formation, its accomplishments over the last 25 years, and it really set the stage for tonight's presentation, which was to discuss with the city council the results of a, of a study that was commissioned by the city and the findings of the report from RevPAR International. RevPAR International looked at three things, including, that are included in the report, a market analysis, a financial feasibility of what a new center might look like, and revenues and expenses that would be anticipated, and it also looked at the economic impacts of the spin-off businesses when a, when a city has a convention center. In helping put together this study, I just wanted to acknowledge the Arvada Visitor Center and its executive director, Gene Gordon, who's here tonight. Gene helped a lot with the survey that went out to earlier as part of the study. And at this time, I wanted to introduce the two presenters tonight from RevPAR International. Tonight, we have Paul Landry, who's the Senior Vice President, and Rick Pastorino, who is the principal with RevPAR, and they'll be tag teaming this presentation for you.
Gentlemen, thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Gordon. Mayor Williams, council members, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Rick Pastorino, and this is Paul Landry. We're, we're feeling a little remiss because we didn't bring cookies or tee-shirts or, or beer, so we apologize for that.
Well, the beer was the big mistake, but that's.
Well, we were commissioned to do a study, just a brief background, because we have 100 a hundred-page report, that we have to consolidate into a 20-minute presentation here to you, and give you some time to ask us some questions. RevPAR International is a hospitality advisory and asset management firm, and we specialize in that area, one area is conference centers, and convention centers, and so on, and Paul spearheaded this effort with assistance from a number of people in our office, so we're here to present the findings. Basically, our objectives, let me get the technology going here, the objective of this study was to validate the market and financial feasibility of a standalone conference center, we were provided five sites, and asked to evaluate that, and then perform our analysis on that, both market and financial. Purpose of the project was to offer a new, modern, and technologically advanced conference and event center, to replace the current Arvada center, as it's being repurposed, or that portion of it is being repurposed, and to find a new home for it, hopefully, and to attract existing and new sources of business, to generate positive economic impact to the community. There were some secondary discussion points, that Gordon asked us to be aware of, and be prepared to answer, how strong is the demand for a new conference center in Arvada? Can the commercial market accommodate this demand on its own? Why do municipalities get involved in the conference center business? And the last is, how does this facility help contribute to the city's strategic plan? So, as we go through here, and we're looking at this more casual, so if you want to ask questions, as we're going through, or if we're plowing through this, and we're skipping over something that you want to focus on, we're happy to do that as well, but hopefully we'll answer those questions, as we go through. The methodology that we use is fairly standard, in most of our approaches to market research and financial analysis, it starts with just familiarizing ourselves with the area, which we somewhat were, prior to even commencing the engagement, but then we come out, and we spend time here, talking to a lot of people, and doing market research, analyzing the five sites, we have proprietary models for supply and demand analysis, that distills down to a, a point where we can recommend a facility size, and all the accoutrements and services that need to go along with that, and then from there, we estimate top-line revenues, and then move through the pro forma, and estimate what kind of cash flow can be generated, and then do a valuation estimate on that. In this particular case, we took it a couple of steps further, estimated construction costs, which you'll see tonight, or saw in the study, as well as doing an economic impact analysis, to see what the economic benefit of that would be, beyond the conference center itself. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Paul, and he's gonna walk you through the, the numbers portion of our, of our evaluation.
Great, thank you, Rick. So, I don't want to spend too much time on the historical performance, I think we're all familiar with how the facility has performed over the years. In terms of conference center, financial performance, the facility has been fairly stable. I mean, there's been some fluctuations, I think the biggest thing that I would point to, as, and I'm assuming everybody's read the report, is the falloff in wedding demand. And what you're seeing, not just in Arvada, but in all these markets that we work in, is that there's this proliferation of new, unique wedding venues, everybody's getting into the game at this point, because they are quite lucrative, and, and so, you know, the, the Arvada center, banquet and conference center, actually felt a little impact from that, I think. The other thing is, historically, some of the events that were meeting there, and some of the, the clientele, either outgrew the facility, or noticed that the facility was getting tired and outdated, and somewhere along the way, they decided they wanted to move their event, for one reason or another, so. But, I think the main takeaway here is that, you know, it's remained fairly stable, for the most part, historically speaking. The market mix, this is based on, on events held at the Arvada center, what we tried to do is distill all the different events done into two major segments, which was corporate and government, which also included association, which also included our, events from the Arvada center itself, as well as some city programs, and then there was also the leisure side, which we affectionately call the SRF business, which is an acronym for social, military, educational, religious, and fraternal, it's basically a leisure group business, if you will. And despite the falloff in the wedding business, you know, there was an increase in the leisure mix, because I think Restoration Church started having their events there, and that sort of increased that, while city programs, and some, Arvada center programs started falling off. So, getting down to the sites we looked at, initially, a meeting with the city of Arvada, Gordon and team had basically offered us a few sites to consider, and those were sites two, three, four, and five on this list. RevPAR actually added Site One, for all the reasons that you read in the report, I mean, it really is the centerized location in Arvada. It's close to our Old Town Arvada, it's close to the Hilton Garden Inn, it's close to a number of different amenities, which a lot of meeting planners are looking for, and, and so, when we get down to our site matrix, which is the way that, the vehicle with which RevPAR ranks these different sites, Site One sort of welled up to the top, for all these different reasons that you're looking at. Anything you want to add to that? This next slide, we thought is really important, anytime we approach a conference center, especially a standalone conference center, we leverage off of the information that's put out by the International Association of Conference Centers, it's affectionately referred to as IAC, and they put out this study every year or two, which basically goes out and polls all these different conference centers, whether they're within hotels, or whether they're standalone, and it aggregates all this data, and we, you know, we go through and we use it, because we find it very meaningful, in some cases. A little bit less than a few, you know, half of the respondents were non-residential conference centers, but only 12% were owned by a public entity, and in some cases, the public entity would initiate the project, and then sell it off, it just, it was, there's a variety of different ways that it could go. One of the critical success factors that we found in our research was proximity to a major metropolitan location, which, I mean, when you say it, it sounds obvious, but it really is being ideally positioned to be able to acquire that demand that you're looking to bring to the facility. We talked about, at length in the report, about having a contiguous facility. So, a contiguous facility, when we refer to that, is a facility that has hotel rooms attached to it, and a lot of these meeting planners are, are looking for that, those are defined as residential conference centers. So, when you look at this sheet, you can see residential conference centers generate significantly more average catering revenue a year, than, than non-residential. The last two points, I thought was important to add here, because two out of three of these non-residential conference centers typically operate under some form of municipal subsidy, which means that they're not generating enough revenue to make a profit, to pay for the facility. It depends on the facility, what that break-even point is, and with the, the way that the facility is laid out, and the way that it's structured, so there are a variety of different factors there. But mostly, you're gonna find these things in a major city, because that's just where they're gonna be successful. And then-
One, one other point I'd just like to make, on the, the residential versus the non-residential, the other influence that you see in those revenues up there, is it changes the mix of the business coming in, just to sort of simply state it, you, you have more overnight, multi-day meetings, from outside sources, that tend to be less price-sensitive, than day meetings coming from your leisure side, that are, tend to be more price-sensitive, and, and you're not, you're not achieving as, as much revenue.
So, and the last point is, is that a majority of the demand originates locally, because there's no hotel rooms attached with a standalone conference center, so they have to go out in the market, and negotiate a separate deal with some of these hotels, and then possibly hold their meeting, or one component of their meeting, at the standalone conference center. So, we did a number of different approaches to market survey, Gene helped us release this survey, which got us a good amount of data, but we also looked at comparable centers across the country, as well as locally, we reached out to them, we talked to them, to try and determine what their successes and failures were, and what their perspective was on the project. Again, no big surprise, price value is one of the main factors, right now, with most meeting planners, and most end-users, co-located with hotel rooms, and proximity to their respective offices. We asked all these people we talked to, if they would consider a standalone venue in Arvada, and most of them agreed that they, they would. What they liked about Arvada was, number one, it was centrally located, in a major metropolitan area, and number two, it was outside of downtown Venver, which can be price-cost prohibitive, in some cases. So, we found that to be interesting, because we thought that would be an interesting competitive advantage, for any facility built in Arvada. So, the existing facility right now, everybody knows where it is, everybody, I'm assuming, has, has been there, it's made up of one large ballroom, which is divisible by four, about 7,000 square feet, a separate meeting room, it's got a kitchen, it's got basic amenities and support services, in terms of technological advancements, and stuff like that, that can be used. Some of the observations and current concerns with the current facility, is that a lot of users feel like they've outgrown it, so they've moved on to other facilities, it has limited breakout space, and breakout space is very important, especially for the corporate, or government, or association group, because they'll collectively meet as a group, and then they'll break out into, into separate meetings. They mentioned, in some cases, the facility was dated, and that there were just other options out there. So, we took all of this stuff, all the stuff that Rick mentioned earlier, the historical information, all the information from our comparable analysis, from our market study, and we sort of distilled it into what we thought was the best facility profile, at Site One. Do you want to describe this, you always have a good way of explaining this.
So, to Paul's point, about how we approach our analysis and our estimates, I mean, the idea is, is that we want to look at multiple ways of sort of creating a range of reasonableness, because we're, we're projecting into the future, so ultimately, what we're trying to do, is make that leap of faith into the future as small as possible, so that's why we go through this comparable analysis, we're looking at the existing center, how that's performing, and we also do a zero-based buildup model. And in terms of doing a zero-based buildup model, we literally go through the 365 days of the year, and basically layer in the types of business that we see occurring in the market, according to the size that they are, according to the type of event, and we go through there, and we have several people look at it, and ultimately, it aggregates to a, a range of performance, that we could expect out of this center, based on the facility recommendation that we made. We go back to, once we do that, then we go back to what our comparable analysis was indicating to us, as well as what the historical performance of the Arvada center was showing, what it was doing, and we basically rationalize whether or not this is reasonable, whether or not we need to go back, and go through it again, and, and refine it a little bit more, but ultimately, we just want to test a couple of theories here, going through multiple types of ways to establish that range of reasonableness, so that we're, we're, we're comfortable that that leap of faith has been reduced as much as possible, based on the fact that we're projecting into the future.
So, this gets down to where, it goes back to our, the historical performance of the facility, and, and our projections, you know, essentially, we're, we're looking at a facility that is gonna maintain a very similar market mix to where it's been, it's gonna yield in some more higher-end corporate and association business, still try to go after 20 or 30 weddings a year, which is, both of those are the most lucrative events, that you're gonna see for a conference center like this, and then it'll stabilize, in year three after opening, which means that's indicative of what we would anticipate performance to be moving into the future, and then the blue bar is growing, in the second box to the right, just because of inflationary forces. Anything else?
Well, I, I think the key factor is, is that if you look at what we've estimated for the performance, under both attendees and events, we did not vary significantly, we increased it, but I would call it modestly to moderately, over what the existing facility has demonstrated that it could do, where we felt very comfortable was increasing the, the pricing that you would be able to achieve, by, through those events, because you're changing the mix of business, that would be coming in. So, if, if we were to go back to the earlier slide, that showed that market mix of where your corporate was declining, and your leisure was increasing, your corporate, those types of events are, you're less price-sensitive, versus your leisure component, which is more price-sensitive, by creating a new facility that's technologically advanced, that has more breakout space, that's meeting the needs of your contemporary market here, we, two things were gonna happen, you were gonna change the mix, and the type of business that is coming in there, and the second thing is, you're gonna, you're gonna be able to get more money for it. So, ultimately, behind here, we didn't go out and aggressively increase the number of events that were increasing, or the number of attendees, we focused on the mix of business, because that's what the surveys were telling us, when we came back, and when we looked at the responses from the surveys.
As well as the more successful conference centers, that we looked at on a comparable basis, one of the ones that's in the report, that we looked to, and we, we talked to quite extensively, was the one in Linwood, Washington. You know, it's in a very similar location, it's right off of I-5, you know, they built it, it was a purpose-built, relatively new facility, that it had started out with some municipal subsidies, in order to, you know, to, to be successful, and then, it, it became so popular, that the city had, was able to stop providing subsidies to the facility. And then this just points to the mix that we're projecting, moving forward, it's very similar to the slide earlier, that I pointed to, slightly more corporate, and association and government business, than, than on the leisure SRF side. And that takes us to our financial projections.
So, the financial projections are done in a similar fashion, we have the financial statements of facilities that operate in a similar fashion than this, the comparables that we use, either from our in-house library that we have, that we've done work with over the years, in this case, we had the historical performance of the, of the existing center here, so between those, and then we also use the IAC data, I think we had about five or six years of IAC data, that we also leveraged off of, to come up with our estimates, primarily on the expense side, because we had generated the revenues from the other analysis that we, that we walked you through earlier.
So, this takes us down to our construction cost estimates, now, not knowing exactly where the facility was gonna be, whether or not it was gonna be an adaptive reuse, or a new build, what type of construction we were ultimately gonna try and achieve here, you know, we use what's called Marshall Valuation Services, they basically just, by any possible building or use that you can imagine, they provide construction cost data, for us to distill down, and use in our investment metric analysis, but in this case, we just picked a, you know, sort of a, an average-style Class B convention center, and we added on the various site and building improvements, contingencies, FFNE and OSNE, if, you know, we're, we're standing here a year in advance, after doing the study, and I think if there was anything Rick and I would go back and sharpen our pencil on, it would probably be the, the development cost of the facility, so.
Well, one thing that we've seen, just across the country, over the last 12 months, is just an acceleration in construction costs, although it's been happening for a while, we've seen, on the hospitality side, many deals are struggling, because the construction costs have increased so significantly, over the past 12 to 18 months.
Mr. Allard's got a question for you.
On your recommended site, did you, I didn't see any number for the cost of the land?
We did not, we excluded the cost.
So, none of, your, your estimated cost of $8 million is, not, not including land cost?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, because in Site Two, as well, the site adjacent to the current AC-BCC, you know, it's got fewer barriers to entry than a site at, you know, down at I-70 and Wadsworth, because we don't have, there's no site down there that's been identified, but the city owns the site there, so, you know, it would be the path of least resistance.
Your preferred site, the land is gonna cost some money.
You're right.
Correct, and I think we included that in our site matrix.
We did talk about that, but what we were trying to get to, is where we felt the most ideal site for a facility like this is, and that's what these projections and estimates are based on. If we went back, and you said, no, Paul, we're gonna locate it at Majestic View Park, I would tell you the projections that would look materially different, at this point. So, that takes us down to the end, it's the, it was the last step that Gordon mentioned in our study, and that was the direct and indirect economic impact, that we identified. Obviously, taxes, additional taxation, and, and jobs were at the top of that, the spillover effect to various entertainment establishments in the local market, more hotel room nights, although at this point, I'm not sure the Garden Inn needs them, it's operating at a high occupancy level already, and then sales tax from the convention center purchases, and when they reinvest in the facility, in terms of capital expenditures, and just the general spin-off effect, that these things can do, I mean, this is why municipalities get involved in these things, it's not to make money as a conference center, it's to provide a service to the market, and get, you know, additional incremental development on the side from this thing. So, I hope we moved through that quickly, but not too quickly.
You did, you did good. Open up for council questions, Nancy Ford.
So, first of all, it was a very interesting report, I appreciate it. When you, when you talk about being next to a hotel, in, in your report, you talked about the possibility of having up to 500 visitors at the conference center, is there a proportion to the number of hotel rooms- Is there a proportion to the number of hotel rooms that you should have next to a conference center like this?
The rule of thumb in the industry is generally that you don't want to devote more than 60 or 70% of your rooms to any one group. So if you do the math there for a 500-person event at a conference center, that would indicate that you would need a 300-room hotel generally, or something larger than that, since that would equate to the 60 or 70%. But most of, most of the events at the 500-person level tend to be more local, what we call catering event or non-residential events, as opposed to, in facilities such as this, rather than a drug company coming in and holding that size of event for a multi-day period. Those tend to go down to center cities as opposed to suburban, suburban areas.
And in, you mentioned about 19,000 square footage, I believe, for this conference center.
No, I don't think that's, I think it was 30.
So it's, the 19,000 is the, we call it dedicated meeting space. It's basically the front of the house space. It's the actual meeting rooms and the pre-function areas. Typically, as we stated in the report, the back of the house, the ratio of back of the house to front is, the back of the house is typically one and a half to two times what the front of the house was. That's, so we were just order of magnitude projecting the size of the facility.
Okay. And I don't remember reading this, maybe in here, but in terms of weddings, how much land generally do these facilities have, these unique wedding facilities that are, you know, the thing now, generally? How much land do they have?
Some can be vast, especially if they're in destination seasonal locations. I mean.
It really runs the gamut.
It runs the gamut.
It depends. I mean, we've seen unique venues where there's, you know, a barn. It may be part of a larger farm, but they're building a barn and dedicated some portion for activities as well as parking and using that. So it really does run the gamut. I don't think there's any necessary rule of thumb there.
I mean, you get, you could get breweries in a municipal area that don't have a lot of space, you know, that just have a meeting room and a beer garden out back. And then you could be in, where I was recently in Loudoun County, Virginia, and some of the wineries in that area have dedicated significant space to pulling these, you know, to going after these weddings and pulling them out of your traditional wedding venues.
But these tend to be somewhat different approaches to the whole concept of the event that they're holding, because in many instances, that event location is charging a fee for you to use that facility, and then you're responsible in many instances for bringing in catering and all the other activities that you want to occur there. So it gets somewhat burdensome and can be expensive, but what we have found, because we do this across the country and we asset-manage hotels as well, is that we're finding this trend amongst the millennials, looking for this unique experience rather than more of a traditional conference center or hotel, that they're seeking out these places and they're finding it, and there's a market out there that's responding to it.
I mean, the Lamar Street Event Center here in Arvada is a perfect example of that. You know, that is not a traditional meeting facility, but it's, you know, they don't even have a kitchen there. But they've been able to, you know, acquire, accommodate a portion of the business that here to form, they have been with other facilities in the area, so.
So in your analysis of the land here in Arvada, I'm assuming that you've been all around the area south of the, our transit hub. In your opinion, you don't say in your report, but you do say that particular area, but have you seen anything in terms of the land that just stood out to you and said, "Oh, that'd be perfect"?
That's a great question. If I had my druthers, it would be located directly between Old Town, Arvada, and the hotel, you know? A specific site, no. I mean, I could see.
Well, we saw a few.
Right, yeah. They may not be available, but.
Well, actually, as I was reading your report, I was thinking about sites that are currently not available as being the perfect place for a conference center. So I was just curious.
I think we would agree.
Quite honest.
No, I think we would agree. I mean, there's, there's a pulse, there's, there's a lot going on there that would be attractive, that it would all sort of work together if you look at what's there and what's developing.
Right.
To add that to that, could increase the activity there exponentially by putting 500 people in there, and then they spill out into the streets afterwards and start visiting some of the other restaurants and bars and activities that are over there. It would be, it would be ideal.
Well, one of the questions that I had after reading the report and looking at the rate of return on investment that you had mentioned in the report, was in my mind, I was sort of trying to compare it to some of the things that are in the works at the moment to see how that compared in terms of return on investment. So I was just curious about your opinions on the area. So that's all I have at the moment. Other than that was just, you know, increase of construction percentage, but that would probably be hard to predict at the moment, you know, based on your numbers, like what percentage increase would we expect if we were going to have this built by 2019?
250 a square foot.
Well, that's where we're at now. So I think it would be north of 300. And again, that doesn't, that doesn't include land, and I think we collectively decided that we were leaving land out of it because we weren't sure what ultimately the location was going to be, so to impute some type of land cost. And in many instances, the municipality is putting up the land, if they're bringing in private developer or somebody else to do this, that's their subsidy in order to entice that private sector developer to come in and build it. So it really can run the gamut on how you want to structure it.
And I think we would recommend, as we sit here today, that there is going to have to be a unique element to this facility, if developed in any of these areas. I mean, let's, let's be honest, you're competing against residential conference centers with hotel rooms attached to it. You're competing against these unique venues. If you go up and build a traditional conference center, it's probably not going to generate the level of income that you're looking for, too.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because you did mention that in your report, and I think that's a good point. Thank you.
Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, just a quick question. How vulnerable are these municipally subsidized conference centers to the private sector? You know, it seemed like, particularly in a redevelopment area or even a development area, that a, that a hotel operator who's going to build a 200-room hotel or 400-room hotel, whatever they, whatever they choose to build, can do the, do competing conference space, you know, cheaper? And of course, as your report shows, they derive a much greater revenue yield off the same amount of space because of the attached hotel rooms. And it would seem like, for any municipality who would walk down this path, that you're opening yourself up to fairly significant risk of the private sector just crushing you.
Yes and no. So I think the numbers that we put together reflect that reality. If you are doing a non-residential center in a freestanding location, you will have that. So those are built into the numbers that we gave you. I think one thing that Paul didn't mention is that on the, on the present value analysis that we did of the cash flows, we mentioned it in the report, that that came out, if you take the income that we, that this facility is estimated to generate over a 10-year period and do a reversion, everything else, the current value of that comes out at roughly four to four and a half million dollars, using discount rates, and that, you may, we may be able to adjust those depending on how you view that. But, and we're estimating that the cost of the facility, absent land value, is eight million. So you're, you're negative $4 million already. So that would tell you that it's a non-feasible project.
Right.
But I think we're trying to reflect that. What we have seen and worked with other municipalities on is, in many instances, the reason why you are doing this is not necessarily for the direct benefit of income coming out of that facility, it's for the spinoff and the economic activity that it generates around it. In some instances, the municipality would look to partner with a private sector hotel developer so that you can create a contiguous facility without necessarily having to invest in the room side of it. And between rooms and food and beverage, rooms is a higher profitability. I mean, just simply stated, in the industry, rooms, you make 70% profit. In food and beverage, it's the reverse. You make 30% profit, so you got to do a lot more volume and there's a lot more effort involved for lower margins. So that's why you've seen this proliferation of rooms-only operation and then partnering, putting a pad out front for a restaurant, or putting it next to freestanding meeting space, because that entity is looking to focus on that part of the business as opposed to the food and beverage side of the business.
Yes. Thank you. That's a good answer, and I think, I think it points to probably the most practical solution for Arvada, which is, as you've mentioned, exactly, a partnership, whether it be in a redevelopment type of a situation or, or something like that, probably.
And it's ironic, because Rick and I, about a year and a half ago, we worked on a project with the city of Galida, just north of Santa Barbara in California. And they, there was a private developer that was developing a Hilton Garden Inn in the city of Galida, and what the city wanted was the meeting space. So they partnered with the hotel, increased the level of meeting space that the developer would have built, city gave them some subsidies, everybody got what they wanted in the end.
Thank you. Mr. McGough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank both of you for a very informative written and, written report in the oral presentation. The questions that I've had have really been answered here, but I wanted to take note of. I had one major question as I read the report, and I thank you for answering that early on, and that is, what is SMURF? I came across that, and I went back and I looked and looked and looked for its first use in the report so that I could find out what SMURF was. So thank you for giving us that definition early on in your presentation.
I try to remove myself from the industry vernacular as much as possible, but it's, it's ingrained.
Yeah, I checked out my dictionary and all that.
Good find it.
Little blue.
And I thought you misspelled it. I thought SMURF was S-M-U-R-F, but anyway, thank you.
Very good. Mayor Pro Tim Pfeifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just questions. So when you looked at indirect revenue, did you, was there anything you can derive off of how the Arvada Center is today? Because obviously, we don't, we're not next to shopping. It's all residential in the area. It's not even walkable to any revenue source. I mean, there's, I don't know, an infrequent bus that may show up. So was there any comparison to that? I mean, obviously, you went down to the 52nd Wadsworth area. I mean, that's the no-brainer.
Right.
But a lot of the locations I saw in circles when you went through that fairly quick are mostly residential area.
Correct.
So I have to put some grain of salt on the revenue projections, knowing that today, if we were to put them there, that revenue opportunity may not exist.
Right, because, I mean, if you co-locate a conference and event center adjacent to the current Arvada Center in the future, those spinoff developments are going to be far less than what you would see down in I-70, where there's that base of commercial development already. It's a great point.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if council has the vision of seeing an arts district, or whatever we've talked to in the past, around changing the Wadsworth corridor a little bit in the area to be, to drive more of that, I don't know, environment that would sustain or increase revenues for both the Arvada Center as well as this convention center that we're proposing here, you're proposing.
It's a great question. I think two components of that is, it's not only the actual construction development activity that you would get from locating a center, it's also, as I said before, the people walking outside afterwards. Depending on these locations, to your point, if there's no reason to hang out because there's nothing there, they're going to get in their car and go home, as opposed to walking outside and seeing 25 restaurants and bars, and it's like, oh, let's go have a drink. I mean, that's really how you sort of maximize that velocity of money coming out of there.
Today, I don't, I don't feel that we get a lot of indirect tax revenue from attendees, because most of the things that we go to the Arvada Center, get in your car and you do leave. At least the events I've been to, I mean, obviously, we live here, but people visiting us, I've noticed that's the behavior as well. It's very, very rare that they'd go down to Old Town. They may or may not, but it doesn't seem to be always a thought. The other thing is, is instead of doing a large convention center and so forth, and I would bring it up again, is the Fox property. If weddings are such a hot thing right now, and there's more revenue in that, was there any thought or look, or Gordon, did you give them any thought around the Fox property on how we could maximize that property to maybe, maybe not do a grant, an $8 million convention center, but maybe we should look at a wedding location? Because as we know, the Westwoods, as soon as it's done, they'll probably be packed with weddings all the time off that golfer's deck. And then, you know, is there an opportunity for us to seize that? And I think it was Site Five.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Paul and Rick to speak to the site matrix and speak about how they saw the Fox House and the characteristics with all the different evaluation factors.
So is one good and five is bad, or 12 is bad?
One's better.
One's better, okay.
There's been a lot of internal debate about this model, so if you have any suggestions.
What I'm worried about is, you're trying to solve for a convention center or conference center and event center, and, and I'm saying, why don't we scale it down and have a little bit more focus of where the millennials are wanting to go versus trying to do the square box and fit 500 people in it? I think the Arvada Center has gotten tired, and I think that's why I don't think people want to go there as much. So how do you create a unique experience and capture the 100, 200 attendees and weddings only, small, smaller events? And maybe better margins?
I know you have some thoughts on this, but I'll share mine first. I mean, that, to me, is almost a different study than what we looked at here, because I didn't like the Majestic View Park site at all for what we're talking about in terms of a conference center that was technologically advanced, that was going after the existing base of business that we already had at the Arvada Center, as well as that, you know, what I'll call a latent demand piece that we wanted to try and attract from other regional areas. We also wanted to be careful not to build a church for Easter Sunday, you know, and build one facility that's dedicated at attracting wedding business, or, you know, something along those, or just corporate, if you will. So we thought about that, but there were a number of different factors, as I was rating that site, that moved me away from it. But the point is well-taken, that it is, there's an ambiance there and an atmosphere in that area, that if you did do something that felt isolated from the residential area, because that would have, that would be important, or removed from the residential area, that you could create a dedicated event center like that. But then you're putting yourself in a position where your sales team has got to go out and sell directed sort of events and stuff like that.
I think also from that perspective that you're looking at, the, the commercial sector is already filling that particular segment to a large degree and doing it well. I mean, I think the viewpoint that we had, the objective of this, was that you were trying to cover a number of bases with this conference center, weddings being one, perhaps a half-a-dozen to a dozen potential uses for it. But if you do want to do that, it is a lucrative area, but you're going to be smack up competing against all of those other.
And I don't think it's our role there, it's just we have an asset that has a beautiful ceiling and trying to compensate for some of the expenses for the negative expenses on it.
So one other thing I would add is that it's a great temporary use, depending on what you're building. Similar to, a lot of people build golf ranges, because it's a temporary use until the growth moves out there, and then they find an alternative use for it, a higher-density use. So to your point, if it's a temporary use for five to 10 years, and you think you can make some money at it, and it's not costing you a fortune to put whatever structure out there to accommodate it, it could be a very viable use.
The other thing is, when considering the five components of SMURF, the S part can be lucrative. The MURF, or the remaining part of SMURF, can be rather price-sensitive, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good. Did you all do an analysis of, you know, the other option, of course, is to renovate the meeting space at the Arvada Center and make it more attractive and more usable and potentially have some breakout rooms, things of that nature? Did you look at that at all or not?
I thought it was a diverse, the use was being diverted to alternatives.
Well, some people think it's going to, but there's others who question that.
We did not, we did not evaluate.
Okay, that was not part of your program.
One of the parameters we, we.
Okay, very good. Okay. Well, thank you all for your presentation, your information. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Give us food for thought. I'm sorry, Mr. Howard? I missed you.
I have a couple of questions. Your projections and your various profit and loss and so forth would change if you, if we chose Site Four or Five or some other site? if we chose a site four or five or some other site? Those projections would all have to be readjusted?
Correct.
Because, because they're based on your preferred or your, or the best site.
Correct.
Secondly, on page 55, you've got direct impact, it's no big deal, but you've got real estate taxes and property taxes, and this would be a city-owned facility, so there would be no real estate taxes. It's a, well, it must earn $20,000 a year or so, but that number needs to be changed.
I think we just added that from a market-based perspective, if a private developer can do that. So I think we added that just for perspective, in case that it wasn't city-owned, that you actually attracted private developer interest in it, so you could see what we estimated the taxes to be.
But we're happy to make that change.
Correct.
Yeah, well, I just assumed this was going to be a city, city-owned facility.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Devon, anything else you need from us on this topic tonight?
Not at this time. We may bring some other information back to you at a future time for some more discussion, but we wanted to get your reaction to this market study, and thanks to the consultant team and to Gordon for putting it together.
Very good. Okay, how much time do you think you need for the last item?
I think we're ready.
Okay, it's everybody. Okay, we're going to stand in place, we're not stepping out.
I think Linda Haley is always right on, so.
Standing way above, above.
Okay, let's, uh, let's reconvene.
And now the highlight of our evening, Linda Haley.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time this evening. I am here to give you our annual workforce planning update to you all. If you all recall, why are we here? It's because we are staying true to our commitment from your council priority from 2015 to ensure that we are not only creating workforce plans for our departments, but utilizing those on an ongoing basis, updating them formally every year, and ensuring that we are continuing to align business strategy with workforce strategy. So what has happened since I came to visit with you all last year at this time? We've had 16 retirements, that's in the last 12 months. So far for 2017, that's 12 retirements, so just through August or through July of this year, it's 12. But if we look at the whole year since we've last talked, it was 16. This is the trend of double-digit retirements that we've had for the last four years now. I anticipate for the remaining four months of this year, we'll probably have a few more hit us. So obviously, retirements are pushing a lot of the demand to ensure that we're on top of workforce planning. We continue to update the plans that all departments have created. Also, this, in this past year, we are experiencing internal promotions. You see, there's 27 there listed. I do want to note for you, out of those 27 promotions, there's 12 of them that are from utilities alone because we have established career ladders within our utilities department. Specifically, for example, we have a utility technician position, hiring at an entry level and sustaining success at that level. They have to pass certain certification exams for water. Then to move on to the next level, which is a utility tech two, they have to pass another water test and so on and so forth. That goes up to a utility tech four. So it's a nice established career ladder that we've been utilizing in the city for some time. We had 12 people progress through that particular career ladder. That's why you see all the promotions that you do. We also had several promotions in the police department. As you all know, we added two sergeant positions and a commander position, brand new, last year, as we're looking at the Delta Sector development. And of course, with retirements, we had a total of, let me make sure I've got it here, in the police department, eight internal promotions. So out of the 27 there, you see 20 alone or just from two departments. The others are a handful, again, indicative of retirements or the ability to transfer and promote from within. We have examples within these promotions, for example, of someone from one department promoting and taking a position within another department as well. And this year, we were working to more formally align our workforce planning process with the budget process. So we have asked departments, when they came to present their budget requests for 2018, that if any staffing requests were included, that they need to be referenced in their workforce plans to provide further justification and that strategic element of planning ahead for any staffing requests to ensure alignment, not only with their business strategy, but to ensure that we have the budget to support it as well. Okay? Lessons learned as we continue to go. I still consider us fairly new in this formal and deliberate workforce planning process. It's a continual process. There's never a start or stop to this, and I think we're all learning that, that in order to be very effective with deliberate workforce planning, it's an ongoing process, really, almost operationally day-to-day as you're anticipating the constant change, not only in the community, but as we're seeing so many changes within our organizational demographics. We have to be flexible and nimble. There is definitely a one-size-does-not-fit-all approach. Some workforce planning approaches in some departments will not work well for other departments, and going through this process together, as a city has taught us, that we can customize approaches, we do not have to have one-size-fit-all. I wanted to just highlight a couple of examples for you. As we are continuing in our journey with deliberate workforce planning, I'd already highlighted for you some examples from utilities with what's, what Jim is calling career path development. Part of career path development includes formal career ladders. Those types of opportunities work very well in the technician-level positions. The more, the more experience you gain, the more opportunities for a true career in that field. And to establish a formal ladder that will include promotion opportunities, as you gain more years of experience, as you earn your certifications that are required through state and federal law, you can then get your promotion. Also, utilities has made a deliberate effort to see if that kind of approach works throughout their department. Again, some of their work groups, it won't work for, but they're going through this workforce planning study to determine if, in fact, that might be ideal, seeing the success that they're having in other areas of their work groups. Another example is our city attorney's office. Chris Daley and his team have really taken great strides in active deliberate workforce planning with the emphasis of doing cross-training with current staff to plan for succession planning in the future, anticipating retirements that they know are on the horizon, having a really good skilled set of internal talent that already exists and is willing to help each other to then better serve the needs of all the clients within the organization as well as in the community. So Chris has established collaborative teams. Certain members of his department work together on various projects that impact all of their work. They've established a deliberate process in which they are capturing institutional knowledge, whether it's in a resource book for other attorneys that may not be associated with the type of work that their fellow coworkers are doing, but they're capturing some of that great resource and institutional knowledge in this deliberate type of process. So what's next is what we are continuing to ensure we're committed to. Human Resources is continuing to provide enhanced training and resource opportunities. That is our commitment to the workforce planning effort so that our department heads have available resources, the latest trends in workforce planning, understanding that they can utilize best practices out in the industry, and we can, we can supply that type of resource for them. Again, with the annual updates and the structured approach that's aligned with the budget process, we feel it really creates more of that deliberate, strategic, and effective approach to workforce planning. And obviously, the benefits are clear. When you can capture institutional knowledge, you can work on constant process improvement, you're in a mindset to constantly challenge the status quo, you then provide growth and development opportunities for those staff members and colleagues that can work better together to then hopefully promote from within. All of that results, of course, in improved, consistent, reliable service to our community. So with that, I will open up for questions.
Right.
Was it 10 minutes?
No, not even that.
Okay.
Good job. Questions from council? Mr. Pfeifer.
Well, I don't have any, I just have a comment. Was this based on an ITIL or Six Sigma study? Just some of your graphs drive process improvement.
You know what? It's, all the, all the graphs are right within PowerPoint. It's a smart art. Have you ever used that?
Yeah, yeah. I just, I just, it was very interesting process improvement study, and you were actually following alignment with it.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. McGough.
Yeah, so I just wondered, when we talk about 16 retirements and 27 promotions and that, our base is what, about 650 employees?
About 670 employees.
So the, the number is certainly significant.
Yes.
But it's, it's not, you know, really large, certainly manageable. I was wondering, just on the, the last slide before the question slide, dedicated to delivering superior services?
Yes.
Like with the process improvement, I'm, I'm sure all those then get documented all the way through on, you know, what those processes are and what the improvement is. And I'm assuming we're making provisions for or projecting out for the increasing use of technology in all of our positions, so that's accounted for through our training aspect.
Mm-hmm.
So as we look ahead, more and more things will be automated, and as we're doing our workforce planning, we also have to incorporate that, I'm assuming, into the training model to make sure that people are ready, not just based upon what has happened within a department, but what's likely to happen.
What's anticipated to come. You're exactly right. Yes. Going through this process is incredibly important, not just for the people that are doing the jobs, but the resources and the systems and the structures in place to anticipate that those will still continue to support the employees in the years to come. So yes, all of the above.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. I don't see any other questions. Good work.
Thank you.
Keep it moving forward. Mr. Devon, is there anything else that we didn't get covered earlier that you would like to cover?
Uh, no, I, I think we're fine. Just a reminder to council, obviously, next Monday is a holiday, and then we have, we're not meeting on September the 11th. Our next meeting will be on September the 18th. On that date, it's a business meeting, however, we will have a presentation item scheduled on the proposed 2018 revised budget, which I believe you all got a hard copy of in your, in your mail. So thank you very much. I know you're going to study it in advance of that September 18th meeting. I would encourage you to read the budget transmittal letter, as in, in that letter, there is, you know, sort of the view from the budget development as staff sees it. A lot of emphasis around the work we're doing to reallocate resources to fund our streets. We've made a lot of progress. We're obviously not there yet, so there's going to be a lot of hard work to do on a going-forward basis, but I am very proud of the work that our staff has done. We've allocated another million dollars a year towards streets, and we're just short of about $10 million a year. You might recall, about six years ago, we were sitting around three, three and a half million a year, so we are making progress, but we still have a lot of work to do. So with that, we will next formally meet on September the 18th.
Very good. We are adjourned. Good work, everybody.
Okay.